This meeting of the Planning Commission for September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, I now ask for a moment of silence. Commissioner Smith, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call.
Commissioner Tao? Commissioner Gregans?
Present.
Commissioner Swigert?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Vu?
Present.
Commissioner Ochoa?
Present.
And Commissioner Gonzalez.
We have a quorum. Leah, will you read the information on how the public may participate in the meeting?
Yes. Members of the audience who wish to address the Planning Commission are requested to complete a speaker card available at the podium at the back of the council chambers. Please submit the completed card to the clerk before the item is called, preferably before the meeting begins. I would like to briefly go over the process of submitting comments to the Planning Commission. Please submit your public comment to the Planning Commission electronically no later than one P M. on the day of the meeting. Comments received before the deadline will be sent to the Planning Commission and will be part of the record and mentioned as part of the public comment portion of the agenda. Material may be emailed to planningweb@cityofmerced.gov and should be limited to three hundred words or less. Please specify which portion of the agenda you are commenting on, for example, oral communications or item number. Your comments will be presented to the Planning Commission at the appropriate time. Any correspondence received after one P M. will be distributed to the Planning Commission and retained for the official record. To view video or listen to the Planning Commission meeting live, go to the city's website at www.cityofmerced.gov, Facebook Live, or Comcast Public Access Channel ninety-six.
Members of the public who wish to speak on any matter not listed on the agenda may speak during this portion of the meeting and will be allotted three minutes. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment, period. Members of the public who wish to speak on a matter that is listed on the agenda will be called upon to speak during the discussion of that item. Leah, do we have any requests to speak?
Sorry, not for public comments.
And that brings us to consent calendar. Would the commission like to remove any items for separate consideration? Not seen anyone? Do we have any requests to speak for any items on the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ochoa and a second by Commissioner Vu. All those in favor, no, excuse me. Commissioners, cast your votes. Record the vote. Passes unanimously. Leah, first item?
All right, getting the hang of it here. Okay, public hearing, item E one, twenty-five dash six five four. Subject, vesting tentative subdivision map number twenty-five dash oh 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 three, initiated by Parmit Singh and Jess Winder Carr, property owners. This applicant application involves a request to subdivide approximately three point three eight acres of land at twenty-five hundred East Child's Avenue into seventeen residential lots generally ranging in size between six thousand two hundred square feet and fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine square feet. This subject site is generally located south of East Child's Avenue, approximately five hundred feet east of Remer Road, with a general plan designation of low density residential and a zoning classification of low density residential R one dash five. This is a public hearing.
The commission, we're having some technical difficulties, so just be a few minutes while we load up the presentation, okay?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Livingston. I am the assistant planner. This first project is vesting tentative subdivision map number twenty-five dash zero 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 three. So here is a location map. This site is located at twenty-five hundred East Child's Avenue. So it's in between Child's Avenue and Ry Street down to the south. And then across Child's is actually Merced County territory. So here is the proposed tentative map. The site itself is three point three acres. There is seventeen total lots. Fifteen of the lots are sixty-two hundred square feet. One of them is eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one square feet. And then one of the lots is fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine square feet. And that's the larger one up to the top right. So here is the nearby subdivision that's beneath it. The map, the taller map on the right is from the tentative map that was approved back when the Ry Street subdivision was built out. As you can see on there, it's called out for a temporary right-of-way. Then on the left is the final map, which also shows that the cul-de-sac was a temporary right-of-way. So as far as zoning and general plan compliance, the site is zoned low-density residential, so it's R one five. Single-family residential is a permitted use in this area, and this proposal complies with all applicable standards under this zone. As far as the general plan goes, this site is, the general plan is low-density residential, and the proposed project complies with the density standards of that general plan designation. So some of the significant conditions, condition number thirteen, at the final map and improvement plan stage, all lots shall comply with the Merced zoning ordinance in regards to development standards for single-family residential zoning. The developers shall use proper dust control procedures during site development, which is set by the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Traffic control signs, street markings, and stripings shall be done as directed by the city engineer. And the developer shall provide all utility services to each lot, including sewer, water, electric power, gas, telephone, and cable television. And that'll be required to all be underground. Some other conditions, grading and construction activity shall be limited to daylight hours, so seven A M. to seven P M. And then the developer shall adhere to any relevant agreements or guidelines that are required by the Merced Irrigation District. So some of the various reasons for denying a tentative map, from our municipal code eighteen dot eighteen dot zero three zero consistency, no land shall be subdivided or developed under a vesting tentative map for any purpose that is inconsistent with the general plan. And as far as the subdivision map act, they do allow for denial if the proposed subdivision design or improvements are detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, including concerns regarding inadequate infrastructure or unsafe conditions. Like I said earlier, this project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning classification, and it was reviewed by various departments, including police, fire, and water, and none of those departments express any concerns regarding this development. So after the public hearing, the planning commission action, they may approve, disapprove, or modify environmental review number twenty-five dash zero zero two two, which is a categorical exemption, and tentative subdivision map number twenty-five dash zero 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 three, subject to the forty-seven conditions of approval. So I'm here for questions. I believe our city engineer is also here for questions, if you guys have any, and the applicant is also here.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the project planner? Commissioner Ochoa?
Hello. On East Child's Avenue, that right turn lane and then the left turn lane, is that going to be protected, or is it just going to have, just stop in the middle of traffic and then turn in?
I'm not exactly sure at this point. I think that would be worked out with the engineering department during the final plan, the final map portion. But as of right now, I'm not entirely sure.
Are there any other questions for the project planner? Hearing none from the commission. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing for public comment. I invite the applicant to speak. The applicant will have a total of fifteen minutes, including rebuttal time. If you wish to reserve the time for rebuttal, please conclude your remarks to give yourself time.
We have, we have three requests to speak.
And we have the applicant.
And the applicant.
Good evening.
The applicant is Cesar Perez.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Cesar Perez. I'm here in behalf of Golden Valley Engineering, representing our client. So I'm pretty much up here.
Sir, could you hold on for one second? Leah, could you change the clock to fifteen minutes, please? Just to want to make sure you get your time that you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. So it's just a simple parcel. Our client just wants to split it to seventeen lots.
Sorry, sir. Can you hold on one second, Leah? Can you start the clock? Okay, sir. Thank you. We're good.
Like I was saying, our client has a single parcel, we split it, seventeen lots for single-family dwelling homes. And as you can see, we'll be connecting to the existing raid cul-de-sac, so it'll be connecting straight through to Child's Avenue. And I'm just pretty much up here to see if he has any questions for the, for us or our client that I could relay the information to.
Leah, can we stop the clock? I believe he's done with his presentation.
Yes.
That way we can reserve it for rebuttal. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ochoa?
Hello. So again, to my original question, on East Child's Avenue, is there going to be a stop sign there, or is it just going to be a turn-in lane with traffic going through, no stops, or anything like that?
So regarding that, at this point, we really don't have anything to determine what's going to be established there based on the stop sign or the turning lanes coming into the street. I'm pretty sure at that stage of time, the roads department might get involved and at that point establish a little bit more based on what exactly is going to require for traffic-wise. But I'm pretty sure at the end of that road coming into Child's, there should be probably a stop sign, I guess.
Are there any other questions from the commission? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak in person or have sent, had sent emails or letters prior to the meeting?
I believe there was one email left at your workstations, and then I would call Robert Ruby and Deborah Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Debbie, and I have lived out in that area since I was ten. And the traffic on Child's Avenue is like being on a freeway. And our concern as citizens of the county is the traffic. With opening up Ry Street, that's going to allow the homes from that other side a thoroughfare through to Child's Avenue. And we are very concerned. There's constant wrecks. That road is a freeway. And the police department, the highway patrol, the sheriff's office, the ambulances, they use it when they're going from Merced to Planata, and it's dangerous. I lived directly across the street from where this property is for thirty-six years. I no longer do. I'm down, two doors down. But we had, we took out, had five mailboxes taken out in one year. We had a wreck where one of the ladies who taught at Weaver School went up onto the canal right at the very same time that the kids would have been walking to school. And my daughter was in a wreck pulling into our driveway with cars passing around her. And I really have a very strong opinion about this because of the traffic. You know, you, you guys don't live there, I'm sure, but for us, we do. And it is a concern for us. And I just wanted to make that part known where we're coming from, how we feel about it. And I'm done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Leah, I forgot to ask, is there any leader of opposition to this item? Okay, thank you.
No, no leader.
So I don't like public speaking, but I'm here because it matters. And several of the neighbors on Ry Street are here. Um, and several of the neighbors on Ry Street are here as well. Uh, we're all busy, we have work and stuff, but we took the time to be here. Um, good evening commissioners, my name is Robert Ruby, and I represent the families, or I'm attempting to, of Ry Street. We're not opposed to new homes being built, but we are firmly opposed to sacrificing our safe, established cul-de-sac to provide access. For at least seventeen years, Ry Street has been a quiet, family-centered street where children play safely. Turning it into a through-street would funnel over a hundred and sixty-car trips a day, from your own report. That's one car every five to six minutes through our neighborhood. That destroys safety, lowers property values, and directly violates the city's own general plan policy to protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible development. I know some may point to recent changes exempting many infill projects from CEQA, but this project represents unusual circumstances dismantling a long-established cul-de-sac and fundamentally altering the safety and character of an existing neighborhood. The California Supreme Court in Berkeley Hillside Preservation versus City of Berkeley ruled that such unusual circumstances require full environmental review, even when exemptions might otherwise apply. And even under the new law, any exemption still depends on meeting all legal criteria, including consistency with the general plan and zoning. A plan that destabilize, destabilizes a safe cul-de-sac, violates policy L one dot five, and threatens neighborhood integrity cannot lawfully be considered consistent. CEQA shortcuts cannot be used to bypass clear conflicts with city policy and residential safety. More importantly, the developer has frontage on Child's Avenue. Your own conditions of approval already require canal undergrounding, power pole relocation, and utility crossings there. That proves Child's Avenue access is feasible. Burdening Ry Street is a choice of convenience, not necessity. We respectfully ask you to protect our neighborhood, uphold your own policies, and require access from Child's Avenue, leaving Ry Street as a cul-de-sac for nearly twenty years. And let it continue, because a lot of people bought their houses for that very reason. And I don't know what they were planning twenty years ago when the Great Recession, before the Great Recession hit, but it, it's an established cul-de-sac neighborhood now. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If you could come up to the, to the podium? And you'll be getting a, a speaker request card as well. And if anybody else would like to speak on this item, if you can head that direction as well, please?
Hi, my name is Jeff Dino, and I live at four twenty-one Weaver Avenue. Just about a block from the, uh, proposed Ry Street access to Child's Avenue. Um, and I basically have some questions about whether the, there are some things in the plans that I am unaware of. Uh, the traffic is going to be considerably enhanced by the making Ry a through-street. Plus the, uh, traffic that will be coming from the Parkway to Coffee uh developments, uh, will add significantly to the traffic on Child's. Uh, I'm concerned about that. And I also wonder if there's any plans for continuing the widening of uh, Child's Avenue beyond, uh, the, this development to accommodate, uh, more traffic. And whether there's a plan in the works for a fire station at our end of, uh, at our end of the, the community. So, uh, I know I'm in the county, and, uh, but I still have a lot of concern about what happens in the city. And, uh, those are my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Call Amy Valencia?
Hello, this is my first time speaking, but I'm a resident at one forty-eight Ry, and I've been there for fifteen years.
Excuse me, ma'am, one second, can you reset the clock? I'm sorry, we just tried to make sure everybody gets the time.
Okay, okay. So again, I'm a resident for fifteen years. I bought my house when there was like ten houses on the block. One of the reasons was because it was in a cul-de-sac. My son wasn't even born, he's fifteen now. He runs that cul-de-sac every day. Um, it's, I don't see the purpose in it, and I think the traffic is terrible. We hear sirens on Child's so often, and it's really scary for me and my kids. So that's, I just wanted to express my opinion that I am against it. That's all.
Thank you.
Can I have one more? Uh, Patricia Gonzalez?
Hello, I'm also a resident on Ry Street. Um, we moved into the house about four years ago. Mainly because it was on a cul-de-sac, opening that up, oh, you know, we have kids, there's neighborhood kids playing there all the time. Opening it up to a, through-street, you know, with the kids playing there. So I posed the idea.
Thank you. Leah, that was our last request to speak?
Correct.
Anybody else in the public who would like to speak on this item? At this time, the applicant does have time left for rebuttal. Would you like to say anything in regards to the public comment? No, not at this time? So at this time, we close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Ochoa?
Yeah, I do have two things. Um, this may be for Matt, so are they gonna be connecting to utilities on Ry Street or East Child's Avenue?
Uh, I think maybe Daryl could speak to that as well, but, uh, from my understanding, it would be from Child's Avenue.
Okay. Um, and for what was said in, um, for what was said earlier, um, this has a CEQA exemption, um, is it the case where it would need a CEQA review if, from what was said earlier, I'm only asking to, um, prevent a lawsuit later down the road?
Uh, no, would not need one.
It does look like Daryl wants to speak.
Good, uh, good evening commissioners, Daryl Jordan, your city engineer. Just a response for the utilities, the utilities will connect through Ry and also on Child's Avenue as well. We'll have a looped water system through there.
Could add to your second question about the CEQA. The sections that we used are, uh, one-five-three-three-two, which is infill development of a site under five acres. Uh, then also one-five-one-eight-three, which, um, is an exemption for general plan consistency.
Commissioners, any other questions while we have Matt there? No? I do have a couple of questions, um, just to, listening after some public comment um, regarding the traffic concern, and I'm not sure who, who would be able to answer that, but has, yeah, Daryl may be the one to answer this, and maybe the, the plans for, um, Child's. Is there anything in the mix, or have we, how we looked at the traffic concerns and the traffic study, or is there gonna be widening to the Child's Avenue project? Daryl, that might be.
Commissioner, yeah, commissioners, there's no plans at this time for any widening of the Child's Avenue. Um, the width that you see on these plans is what the width is projected throughout Child's. And one of the reasons for that, if you do widen Child's Avenue, you invite additional volumes of traffic down Child's. Um, keeping it at this width will maintain the current traffic flows, uh, but not, uh, uh, provide more traffic for both this potential project and others down the corridor.
Thank you. Um, and this doesn't really, um, speak to this particular project, but it's just, it's a fair question, 'cause I know we've been doing a lot of, um, approvals for housing in that area, in that general area, and the question was brought up on fire station. Do we know if there's any fire station plans in the future anywhere?
For coverage?
Assistant City Manager?
Commissioners, uh, if I may, there's a one-point-five-three acre site that's designated at Gerard Avenue and Clime Drive, which is part of the Gateway Marketplace Development. The land's been dedicated, it's earmarked for a fire station. As for queuing, there are two stations that we're looking at, and at this time, I wouldn't be able to say which one would be built first. But there is a site there, uh, officially designated for a fire station.
Okay, thank you for that information. Any other questions?
Uh, I would say, is there any feasibility to not make this a thoroughfare? I think it would look a little funky, but I think just 'cause of the connecting utilities that they have to make it a thoroughfare there. But I would love to see at least a speed bump in the middle of it, or, or something along the lines of that.
I think that's a question for the developer, maybe the developer can answer that question if he's willing to, or to look at the map and, 'cause a lot of the concerns were denied as making it a thoroughfare versus leaving it as a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Um, do you, if the developer would like to comment on that?
Uh, Jim with Golden Valley Engineering. So the right-of-way is set up a collector's street, so actually, it's a, uh, it's a fire safety. It's a, open it up, whole, whole subdivision. And then we do not have any, uh, uh, traffic coming or any measure. I, I'm sure when we submit a plan to the city at that time, and the city have a comment, we can, you know, mitigate it. But not this point.
Okay. Any other questions for the developer while he's up here? Commissioner Swigert?
A quick question, you said that it, it's a fire and safety concern?
Yeah, because if you look at the Google map, whole subdivision here is a, basically is a big, uh, dead, uh, dead end.
Yeah, there's a couple, there's one on Ry, one on La Verno, but you have the thorough, you have a street coming in on Brimmer and Watertown, right? But, no, Brimmer actually dead ends.
Yeah, they're both on dead end.
Water, Watertown does come through, and so does Manzanita. So that does get into the subdivision. Could they open up Brimmer and keep Ry a cul-de-sac?
You know, I mean, uh, we opened whatever city wanted, so, but the subdivision is a setup, go through it.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, but, uh, on the Brimmer, it dead ends into like a fence.
Right.
So I was just curious why they wouldn't just open up there and keep Ry a subdivision, in, in that subdivision as a cul-de-sac, since that could be opened up on Brimmer.
I think that would be questioned for the city engineer?
Okay, I guess a question for city engineering, because there is, there is a gate right there on Brimmer.
'Cause the, sorry, Daryl, just to, not to, but, I think we should keep the discussion for the developer to the tentative map that's in front of us, you know, um, but.
I was just wondering that, when he mentioned that, being, being a fire and safety, they do have, they do have entrances into the subdivision.
Yeah, I think Daryl can, um, the city engineer can weigh in on that, and possibly the utilities that Commissioner, um, Ochoa brought up. Daryl?
Yes, sir. Um, this project is, it's, it's difficult to try to condition a different area of town for this project that's not included in this application. It's something that the city could look at at a later date, however, for this application, um, we couldn't condition an existing street without going through, uh, a lot of outreach and discussion before we could even entertain that. Uh, Mr. Quintero could even discuss that further, however, this street here, I believe, was actually approved when I was here as the previous city engineer, and Frank was here as well. Um, it was designed as a flow-through, as you recall, the existing cul-de-sac is clearly labeled back then as a temporary measure until this street was opened up. It doesn't mean that the commission has to vote that direction. There are traffic calming options that you have already brought up here at the, uh, commission tonight. You can, um, bring those conditions forth. For, for example, you mentioned a, a speed table or something to slow down traffic. That's something we can entertain if the commission wants us to do so. But, uh, this was intended as a, a safety issue to bring fire and safety through this community at the time it was designed.
Thank you, Daryl.
You're welcome.
Commissioners? You, who's back in?
Yeah. So with that being said about fire safety and whatnot, with the gate on Brimmer, how do fire get in now? Off of Manzanita? Okay. Okay.
You got your answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioners Swigert?
Sorry, I just wanna make sure. So Ry was intended for every intentional purposes in the, in the future to go through to Gerard. Okay, so making sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the developer while he's still there? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, before you go, I do have one question, just came, it just popped into my head, I'm so sorry. Just so sorry. Um, so currently, we're looking at, you know, opening up that, that cul-de-sac. If it was the commission's discretion to ask for another tentative map to leave that cul-de-sac in place, what would, how would that affect you and your, not your business, but your plan and design? You know, would it stop it, would it, what, what would we look at if we went the other direction?
Yeah, we have to revise the tentative map and the access from the child, so leave the existing cul-de-sac.
Is, is that something that you may be interested in looking at, or is that just not in the business, business model plan?
I think we, I need to talk to the developer, so, yeah, that's quite a bit different. We may, may factor a lot of layout.
Okay. And the developer's here, correct?
That's correct.
Would you, would you like to speak on that for me? You come up to the podium? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, actually, he said, okay, but we need to revise the tentative map.
Yes, of course, that would, that would change what we do to here today, we have to change the tentative map.
Right.
Okay, I was just curious if they, if it was an option.
If that's option, city engineer want it, you know, because that's gonna be, not gonna be go through it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're open to that.
Yeah, I appreciate you being open to that, and I guess now my question would go to the city engineer. Um, how would that affect, um, Daryl, this city's plan if we did go that direction of leave the cul-de-sac in place instead of opening up that to a thoroughfare?
What most likely would happen, uh, chairman, is that, uh, the developer would have to develop an additional cul-de-sac which would back up to the existing cul-de-sac. So they'd be back-to-back cul-de-sacs to allow for turnarounds on the new development. We could still push through the utilities, through an easement that's existing as you see on the map, that will not inhibit any of our utilities from pushing through. We could maintain all the utilities that you see on there tonight. Um, the lots number, I think they're number nine and number ten. Those would be affected as well as maybe eight and eleven with the new cul-de-sac design on those four lots, almost mimicking what you see on the existing site. They would just be back-to-back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Daryl, I do have one other question. Um, could you speak to the public safety effect, just to get that on record and how that may change that?
Public safety would, I'm assuming, without doing any, uh- Public safety would, I'm assuming without doing any background calculations is the, the, the time for, for, for police and fire to reach the cul-de-sac in the Rye will be a little bit longer. So the reaction time will be longer for them to receive emergency facilities rather than having a straight shot down Rye Road. So there would be a trade-off there from keeping your cul-de-sac as a short and quiet street versus being able to get emergency vehicles there quicker. That's the only thing that I would see as a, a difference from the two designs. We still have a great response time in the city. But it would just be a little bit longer to get there convenience-wise for the vehicles to respond to anything in that existing cul-de-sac, so.
And that would be addressed if we do go to a different tentative map or we request a tentative map to, to be redesigned, correct?
That's correct, and we would, Mr. Quintero and I would probably be talking to, to fire and, and police safety on what's the best route for them to get there if this does not happen. That would be their current route as they have now, but they would just need to be aware.
Okay, thank you. And at that time, we'll bring it back to the Commissioners. Commissioner Ochoa?
Back to it. I, Rye's been a cul-de-sac for 20 years. If it's something the city, the city engineer says it's not something that absolutely has to be done, I would like to stay, see it stay cul-de-sac. It's been that way for 20 years. If it's not pertinent to safety, then I think we should keep it that way. I think this should be pushed till next meeting until the new tentative map is, is done.
I think we would have, I think I'd go to the city attorney on this for, for clarification on what that would look like as a motion. I think that's where we're going.
So there's several options for the commission. I, I mean, if the applicant wants to proceed with a vote to move forward with the project as it's presented before you tonight, the commission would then proceed with either a motion to approve or deny. If the applicant wished to pull this project from consideration, that's certainly within their right for the developer to revise their project and come back to the commission. That's certainly within their, their control. So there are several different options. We can proceed. If the commission approves or denies, it'll follow the municipal code process. As far as approvals, there'll be an appeal period in which either side, for or against, can approve, appeal the project. Alternatively, you know, I'll take a step back. If you were to proceed with an approval or denial of the project, you wouldn't be able to address some of the concerns that you've mentioned here today. So the map would be considered as it's presented before you for consideration, and that decision would proceed forward. Alternatively, the developer always has the option to pull back their project from consideration and present a revised map for consideration to this commission.
Okay, just to make sure I understood that in like layman's terms. All right. So our option is to approve the, approve or deny the map that we have in front of us. And once we do that, the, the approval or denial is locked in and we move forward with whatever options available to us.
Correct.
And then the other option is to inquire to the developer if he's willing to pull back his current tentative map.
Correct, within present a revised project for consideration.
Okay, and that's outside of us doing a continuance?
Correct.
Is continuance an option to the commission, or is it just a pullback option?
I, I don't think continuance is available here because if you continue it and there's a revised map, that's technically a different project. Because there's a substantial change to both the density, I'm assuming from what I've heard from the city engineer, as well as some different considerations that would need to be evaluated by staff. So i- i- in this specific circumstance, because it's such a significant change that may or may not be considered by the developer, a continuance, I, I don't believe would fall in line with, you know, a reconsideration because in my view would be a distinctly different project.
Thank you. With that, I bring it back to the Commissioners.
I do want some clarification. So if project is denied, are they able to come back with a new tentative subdivision map or if they appeal, do they have to bring that same map back?
I- i- if it's denied, it's certainly within the applicant's right to appeal that the commission's decision to the city council. Also, if it's denied, the applicant can reapply with a different version of its project.
Commissioners, discussion?
Are we able to ask the developer if they'd like to pull their application or would like us to proceed with the vote today?
I believe we can ask that question. Would you like to come up to the podium, please?
And as a part of the today's vote, we can lot, everything will be, remain the same.
I, I, I don't think you can because it's a vesting tentative subdivision map. So you, the commission, we need to see what that actually looks like in the map as far as what the configuration is. And from at least what I've heard from the city engineer, there is going to be a different density based on the engineering of that cul-de-sac. So I, I, it's my legal opinion that I don't believe you can just condition an extra cul-de-sac and move forward with the project as it's currently presented.
And just for clarification, we would be able to condition something like a speed bump in, if, in this project?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm, yes, go ahead.
You go ahead, yeah.
I'm at, I'm at that point right now where I'm, I'm, I really don't want to deny this project because it, you know, in previous discussions or even approving, because there, there was, in the beginning of the conversations, there was a little bit of flexibility in, in the design plan, and I think if we can get to a point where we can maybe see another tentative map without having to approve or deny, it might be something to look at tonight if we could. So I'm gonna leave that with you guys.
Okay, we can do that. Yeah, we can do that.
So you would like to pull back your tentative map and resubmit a new?
Right.
Okay, appreciate that. To. Oh, did it come through the mic? Could you say that into the mic, please?
Yes, we want to pull back.
Okay, thank you. I didn't catch that. Thank you, Commissioner Ochoa. Back to legal. Is there motion? What do we do here?
Nothing further for the commission to do and consider at this point. If the applicant is choosing on its own to withdraw their application and resubmit based on some of the comments received tonight. So that, that concludes this item.
That concludes the item. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you working with the commission and the public. All right. Leah, next item?
Item E2, conditional use permit number 25-0015 submitted by Malik Mosley on behalf of Shanann Sham and Minu Trustee, property owners. This application involves a request for tobacco sales for off-site consumption for a new convenience market at 1277 V Street, Suite B. The subject site is generally located at the southwest corner of V Street and McSwain Road, turns into 13th Street going east with a general plan designation of thoroughfare commercial and a zoning classification of thoroughfare commercial. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, everyone again. My name is Matt Livingston. I'm the Assistant Planner. This is CUP number 25-0015 for a convenience market with tobacco sales at 1277 V Street and Suite B. So typically, convenience markets are principally permitted within the zoning classification of thoroughfare commercial per the reced municipal code 20.44.160. A conditional use permit is required for tobacco sales within 600 feet of a youth-oriented facility. Here is the citywide map. As you can see, this project's on V Street. Like I said, it's right by Highway 99. Here is the location map. So as you can see, the project site, like I said, this CUP is because there's a youth center within 600 feet. That youth center is Dennis Chavez Park. It's about 534 feet away. So, yeah, like I said, within 600 feet, so the way it's measured is from parcel to parcel. So the corners of the parcels is within 600 feet, but if you go from the park to the actual entrance to the business itself, it's about 650 feet. And it is across, it's across West 12th Street and W Street. Here's the floor plan that was submitted. As you can see, they are gonna sell a few other things, snacks. They said they're gonna sell some clothing as well. But all of the tobacco and tobacco products are required to be stored behind a counter, so they're not accessible to the general public. So they'll be open daily from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They will not be selling any alcohol. If they do decide they want to sell alcohol in the future, they would need to get a CUP and possibly a finding of public convenience or necessity. And like I said, they're gonna sell tobacco and tobacco products as well as snacks, drinks, and various clothing items. So a little bit of background, MMC 20.44.160 prohibits tobacco sales near schools. This was adopted in 2016 through the city's Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Amendment. There was several businesses throughout the community that were already in operation prior to that ordinance being adopted. Due to community feedback, it became apparent that it was extremely difficult to open up any new business with tobacco sales as there's a lot of schools and youth-oriented facilities throughout the city. So in 2022, the city council approved an amendment to the section of the code to allow tobacco sales within 600 feet of a youth-oriented facility if they get CUP approval. But the sale of tobacco within 1,000 feet of a school is still prohibited. So this was ran by the police department. They didn't have any issues with the request, and they didn't ask for any special conditions. So all the conditions on there are typical for this kind of business. A couple of those conditions that are notable, condition 11, they will have to get the proper permits from the health department. And then, like I said, tobacco products and associated paraphernalia will need to be kept inaccessible from the general public, and they're going to be doing that by storing it behind a, a counter. So after holding the public hearing, the planning commission may approve, disapprove, or modify environmental review number 25-0021, which is a categorical exemption, and conditional use permit number 25-0015 subject to the 19 conditions in the staff report. And I'm here for questions as well as the applicant is also here.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the project planner? No questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the hearing for public comment. I invite the applicant to speak. The applicant will have a total of 15 minutes, including rebuttal time. If you wish to reserve your time for rebuttal, please conclude your remarks to give yourself time. Leila, do we have? Do we know if the applicant would like to speak?
I don't have any requests to speak.
No requests to speak. Okay. I'll bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion. Oh, wait, before that, let me ask the public. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this item? Say none? I'll bring it back to the Commissioners. No questions? At this time, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners? Commissioner Ochoa?
Not too much to say. I, I believe the applicant will now sell tobacco products to the youth. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve environmental review number 25-0021 and conditional use permit number 25-0015, subject to the 19 conditions in the staff report.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Commissioners, cast your votes. And I want to just state for the record that Anthony Gonzalez is actually Jeremiah Gregan's vote. So that's my vote. Anthony Gonzalez, the chair is not here. I'm filling in for him. The motion passes unanimously. Leah, E3?
Hold on. There we go. Okay. Item E3. General Plan Amendment 24-01, Site Utilization Plan Revision Number 3 to Plan Development Number 20, Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Number 1332, Site Plan Review Permit Number 551, Minor Use Permit Number 24-13, initiated by Eric Gonzalez on behalf of Yosemite 1380 LLC property owner. The general plan amendment would change the general plan land use designation from commercial office to business park for 3.02 acres and from commercial office to low-medium density residential for the remaining 4.85 acres. The site utilization plan revision would change the land use designation within PD number 20 from commercial office to self-storage for 3.02 acres and to residential for the remaining 4.85 acres. The minor use permit would be for the interface review to allow commercial development adjacent to or across from a low-density residential R-1-6 zone. The site plan review permit would allow the development a self-storage facility approximately 500 storage units. The vesting tentative subdivision map would divide the self-storage from the residential lots and create the 28 residential lots. This is a public hearing.
Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, members of the public. I'm Johnny Lann, Acting Planning Manager. And just to note that we are working on those subject names, so they'll be shorter hopefully soon. So again, this is a project that you actually have seen before, not in the exact way. It is a public storage facility as well as, a self-storage facility as well as a connected, but separate residential. As you can see, that it's located in sort of that northeast quadrant off of Yosemite and at the, near the intersection of Yosemite, Yosemite and Parsons. Here's a location, site map that shows you where it is. It's about 8.5, 8.05 acres. So project was first presented originally to you and then continued. And then in April, Planning Commission directed staff to prepare resolutions of denial. Resolutions of denial were adopted in May. And then in May, the applicant appealed to, to the city council. Then in July, city council heard the appeal, directed staff to help coordinate a meeting with the applicant and neighbors. And then the meeting of the applicant and neighbors took place July 22nd, per the council's request. And at that meeting, based on the information that the applicant heard, they made changes to the project which include, but are not limited to, a decrease in density from 41 to 28 units, some larger lots, and then the lots along the edge that are adjacent to the southern neighborhood, those who are required to be, remain a single story. Background is that the subject site, as mentioned, is 8.05 acres. It was annexed to the city in 1980 as part of the Southwest Yosemite Parsons annexation. This annexation incorporated approximately 121 plus acres of land into the city limits. The subject site has a current land use designation of commercial office, which usually allows for office-type uses, but it could also allow for multifamily uses if, under the, the right circumstances and entitlements. The subject site has remained vacant for many decades, though. So in general, the recommendation to the, to the city council by you would be for the general plan amendment 24-02 from commercial office to business park and low-medium density residential. The business park is to allow that, that self-storage unit. And of course, then the, the low-medium density residential is for the residential portion of this project. The site utilization plan revision number 3 to Plan Development 20, because this is within a planned development, is to change the approved development standards and the, and the, at, in this point, also the way that the development looks. Your final action, should you choose, is to approve the minor use permit 24-13 for an interface review to allow commercial development adjacent to a low-density residential zone. The site plan review permit- Uh, the Site Plan Review Permit Five Thirty-eight to allow for the development of five hundred storage units and the vesting tentative subdivision map one three three two to divide the self-storage from the residential and create the twenty-eight residential lots. Here's a street view, existing public improvements, do not have street trees, but that's what it looks like from there. There are some, there's sidewalk and, and whatnot. Street view then of Parsons, public improvements with landscaping, sidewalk, curb gutter. Here's the proposed design of the self-storage. I don't believe that has changed from when you saw it last. But it's very similar to what has been um, approved within the city. Here's a site plan, a site plan of the, the building. Um, there is no RV storage to this. It's only actual storage units, five hundred of them. And zero lot line setbacks along east, south, and west property lines. And a perimeter fence with a gate access from east Yosemite. Here's some elevations, frontage along east Yosemite, office space and storage units with stucco finish, stone veneer accents and a large storefront windows. Here's elevations for storage units along east, south, and west property lines, storage unit access through roll-up garage doors, block wall twelve to fourteen feet tall along the back of buildings A and F. The development standards for east Yosemite Avenue, at Parsons Avenue self-storage, so just the self-storage specifically, you have a ten-foot exterior yard, front setbacks for all primary and secondary structures, and then interior yard and um, rear setbacks for all pri- primary and secondary structures. That would be zero lot line. So we have ten feet for the front and then zero lot line for the um, exterior yard. I mean, the, the adjacent property, right on the property line for the rest. Here's how it relates to the actual subdivision to the south that's being proposed. Previously proposed was a forty-one unit subdivision, um, high-medium density general plan designation, mix of single and two-story. The new proposal shows twenty-eight units with a low-medium density residential for the general plan designation. So they've, again, decreased the density. Single-story lots for lots one through fifteen, that would be required so that interface between the existing neighborhood which has single-story um, residential units would be uh, complement, would be compatible. Lots sixteen through twenty-eight would be a mix of single and two-story. These standards would uh, allow for front setbacks uh, at ten feet, um, interior yard setbacks at four feet. And the rear yard sack, the rear yard setbacks would be fifteen feet, which actually is larger than our R one setback. So they would, they would have fifteen feet from that rear neighbor, uh, neighborhood where they, in the rear neighborhood, would allow for ten feet. So they, they actually have a, a much stricter standard for the rear setbacks. And then fence height um, is six feet. And again, lots. Oh. Well, there you are. Um, lots one through fifteen will be all single-story. That will be required to remain single-story. For the um, lots sixteen through twenty-eight, so those original would be the, those lots along the, the single, the single-family residential to the south. These are for the lots sixteen through twenty-eight, so the rest of the property internal to that subdivision. Um, the, the front setbacks would be ten feet, four-foot side setbacks, and again, a fif- fifteen-foot rear setback and then a fence height of six feet. But they have a mixture of single and two-story with a maximum height of thirty-two feet. So with the neighborhood impact, there may be some vibration and noise during construction. Um, the appro- approximate fourteen-foot tall CMU block building wall between the self-storage and the residential uses would reduce impacts regarding the noise and lighting. Also required lighting to be shielded and the shield, um, and shield the storage buildings. Traffic study indicated no quantitative VMT analysis is required based on the MK guidelines. MK being um, the Merced County Association of Governments. They're a regional government authority for, related to transportation. With three hundred and seventy-three trips per day for the total project, falling below the five hundred daily trips per day requirement that triggers. Storage facilities next to residential that are currently existing uh, in the city, we have a couple of them. Simply Space, West Yosemite and R Street and Central Self- Storage, which is up by the Santa Fe tracks. So conditions to note are condition twenty-two, parking lot lights and building lights shall be shielded to not spill over into adjacent parcels. Number, uh, condition number twenty-four, self-storage may operate daily between seven PM, seven PM and seven AM. Condition number twenty-eight, lots one through five is shown on the map at the, at the attachment of F of staff report shall be single-story, again, something that we've talked about in this presentation. Condition number forty-one, all undeveloped areas shall be maintained free of weeds and debris. Condition forty-three, the developer shall establish an HOA governing this project. The HOA shall be responsible for maintenance of all streets and landscaping within the development as well as sweeping, cleaning of all interior streets. Public hearing notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site and published in the Merced County Times three weeks prior to the hearing on August twenty-ninth. The, number one, the mailing, the notice shall be mailed or delivered at least ten days or otherwise provided by SEQA before the scheduled hearing to the following recipients. Public and posting, if notice is mailed or delivered as described in um, the subsection, the notice shall also be published at least once in a newspaper of general circulation at least ten days before the scheduled public hearing. We actually, with a general plan amendment, it's a twenty-day requirement and this public, this um, project uh, public hearing was noticed at least twenty days prior to this public hearing. Here's a showing of the buffer zone of who we uh, noticed, noticed based on law. So the recommendation to the city council uh, is to approve, disapprove, or modify General Plan Amendment twenty-four dash oh two from commercial office, CO, to business park, BP, and high-medium density residential, HMD. It's also to approve, disapprove, or modify the Site Utilization Plan Revision Number Three to Plan Development Number Twenty to change the approved development standards. So the city council would approve the General Plan Amendment and Site Utilization Plan Revision if you choose to recommend that approval to the city council. Your action tonight, something that stops with you, would be to approve, disapprove, or modify the Environmental Review Twenty-four Dash Twenty-five, the negative declaration, Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Number Thirteen Thirty-two, Site Plan Review Permit Number Five Fifty-One, and Minor Use Permit Number Twenty-four Dash Thirteen. And of course, the approvals of those former actions are contingent upon, upon the city council approval of the General Plan Amendment and the Site Utilization Plan Revision to the PD. And I guess that would, that would be it. I'm here for any questions. I believe the uh, applicant is here for any questions. And um, and the city engineer also, should you have questions about any of that circulation?
Thank you, and I'll bring that back to the commission um, for questions for the project planner. I do have a lot of questions, but I'll defer to Commissioner Ochoa first.
Uh, just a technical question. Do we need two separate votes uh, for these two items?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Let me go ahead and dive into mine. I mean, this is more for just clarification and getting things on record. And before I start my questions, I, I would like to just put on the record that I did meet with a developer and members of the community um, in between meetings. Um, so I've listened to both sides, um, not only during the commission meetings, but also separately as well. Um, but my first question is, this has been going on for a while, so some of these questions may have already been answered, but I want to make sure we, we have the answers. But our general plan calls for commercial office on this site, right? That's our current.
Currently, yes.
Yes. Um, so what specific policies do we have that show that changing a business park um, and housing fits the city's long-term plan?
So the long-term plan, especially regarding housing, is really the state is requiring us to provide more housing. And so we're undergoing a, a, a housing element, um, six-cycle housing element update, which really emphasizes housing um, of all types. And so our policy would be, would defer to the state requirement for us to produce housing for people of all different backgrounds and financially.
Okay, so we don't have any, any actual policies, names, or numbers, or anything like that? We're just going by the state direction?
Yeah, we lean on the state, but the other thing is, we, we, our job is to process. And so when we look at a project like this, we just make, we make sure that it meets the standards. And in this case, it does. We have uh, an entitlement process that allows for people to make changes. And historically, we have allowed that. There, there's precedent for it. So um, that is, you know, that, that because this is housing, it is something that's been important to the state, but also um, we've heard from the city council.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question is, you know, Yosemite Avenue is, is a major thoroughfare through Merced and eventually will be an entrance coming off of the campus parkway. So how does this project meet the gateway corridor standards for an attractive active street frontage?
We, well, we're, we're, we are requiring for this project to have additional, um, it's being, well, it's being approved with the additional uh, veneer and the stucco and the treatments as well as the landscaping. Um, generally speaking, we, uh, these projects could be less um, landscaped, but we've, we've worked with them to try and get additional um, shielding and, and landscaping to minimize what could be some stark elevations.
Thank you. And the commission denied this project earlier this year. Um, what changes have been made? And since then, does staff believe those, those concerns were addressed?
I'd like to defer to the applicant because I believe I don't have all the answers. I was not actually at the meeting. Um, but I do know that some of the significant concerns of the neighborhood had to do with the, the second story next to them and the small lots. And so I believe that there were significant um, attempts made to address some of those concerns. But I would defer to the applicant to be able to explain the differences between the project you saw earlier this year and the project that is before you today.
And if we end up approving like a mini, the mini storage in this area, how would that influence future requests um, for similar projects other, in other key corridors in Merced?
I, I believe, if, if it's allowed, if the, you have the discretion, right? Because it is a general plan amendment, so you have the discretion to allow for uh, the change to business park or not. We have had several of these come before you and um, they would not be coming before you if there was not a market for them. Uh, people are in need of this type of uh, si- um, service. And so, you know, you do have the discretion though, when it is a general plan amendment, to decide that you don't want to have that there.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for all the questions, but I want to make sure.
I hope I'm answering them.
Much information as possible since this has come back to us and uh, we've had some new members join us since then as well. So I'm, I'm just kind of getting things back on record. Um, so with the site plan, does, does it meet every city requirement for setback, landscaping, shade, tree screening for the storage facility?
So for those, for the storage facility, to be quite honest, I wasn't the planner. So I wasn't the one that looked up everything, but I believe, you know, with the requirements of um, the standards that we have, it does meet everything that we require, whether it be parking lot trees or the setbacks. Um, it is a planned development, so some of those setbacks and requirements can be shifted a bit because their, you know, the planned development allows the creation of setbacks that aren't standard. Um, so that, so, you know, there, there's that. But I believe that with the um, the elevations that were submitted, you know, we were comfortable with what they submitted because they do show uh, more than just, you know, blank walls and, and windows. They actually have a, a lot of relief. Um, they have some trim, you know, and some veneer, and they do show some landscaping to soften. So we were comfortable with that as a staff. And again, the setbacks themselves were created because it is a planned development and that does allow for them to create uh, their own setbacks and, and standards by our code.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions that I have at this moment. And I'm gonna go back to the commission, Commissioner Ochoa.
Yes, uh, I also want to disclose that I met with the applicant. Uh, no one reached out from the community around or else definitely would have been open to it. Um, I want to piggyback off Commissioner Gregan's first question, which was kind of the housing element aspect tied to this. Um, we rezoned a whole bunch of land to, for, for um, single-family, or not single-family homes, but homes in general. Um, are we still behind on, on that?
Are we still behind on the units?
On, well, on the units, yes, but on the zoning.
We, the zoning has been completed and uh, those, those units that we were required to provide, we now have the capacity. But so you, you are aware, we actually went back, um, because a lot has happened in a year since our, our, we'll call our pipeline projects that we considered, um, were at it, you know, we did a calculation. Turns out, we actually have quite a few more than we originally thought. But we are actually um, over our units that the state is requiring of us.
Awesome, great. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the project planner? No? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing and at this time, I will open the public hearing for public comment. I invite the applicant to speak. The applicant will have a total of fifteen minutes, including rebuttal time. If you wish to reserve time for rebuttal, please conclude your remarks to give yourself time. Is the applicant here? There he is.
Good evening, uh, commissioners. I want to thank you for reconsidering this project tonight and uh, my name is Todd Bender.
Hold on one second, Leila. We're having some clock issues. Go ahead and start over.
Todd, Todd Bender, I'm the applicant.
Hold on, hold on. Technical difficulties.
Third time's a charm. I'll let it start first.
We'll get there. It's okay. If this, if the clock is the biggest problem we have, it's a great night.
We're gonna call our technical IT person in here.
I feel like I need the music as she runs up to, to assist.
Hang on. Sorry.
That's okay.
It's fifteen?
Fifteen. We love this clock. Okay, here we go.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
There we go.
Anyway, Todd Bender, uh, speaking for the applicant tonight. Um, thank you again for reconsidering this. We're happy to, to, to bring this project back to you. There's been considerable amount of adjustments and changes through the months since you've seen it. seen it. And I want to thank staff, that was a very thorough review of it, and pointed out many of the things we've been working on the last few months. But if I may, I'd like to just reflect on a few of those points, not to be repetitive, but, and also highlight some, some items here. Since we last brought the project before you, there's been quite a bit of dialogue with the neighbors, both in the public setting at the city council, as some of you might have listened to or attended, and as mentioned, the neighborhood meeting we had, which we were very appreciative. About 20 neighbors roughly came out, and we spent a couple hours, a couple solid hours, maybe more, discussing the details, trying to understand better, which we had learned a lot at the city council already, but understanding their concerns, looking for ground that we could be, come together on, and adjustments we could make that might ease some of their concerns. So, we weren't able to agree on all the points, but we did find some areas that we made some, I, I think, very large concessions that came their way, and to try to make, show respect for their concerns, and make a community that would be more neighborly to them. It, it seemed that most of the concern, the largest part of the concerns were around, as mentioned, the density of the community, one, the lot size was the second, and the two-story visibility from the proposed project into the backyards of the existing neighbors. That's where we went to work on our changes. And at the meeting, so this would be the third plan. The first plan is what you, which you, came before you before. We create a second one that was shown at the city council as a result of a neighborhood meeting. We had provided some additional changes. That would be the second plan we presented. So, this is a third plan. Now, we presented this at the neighborhood meeting, and had extensive discussions with the neighbors about the plan you're, you have in front of you tonight. I think, as, as a bullet point, again, just sort of rehearsing what staff shared, I, I think to get, to get a, to get our arms around the scope of the changes we've made, that the, the proposed project went from 41 to 28 home sites, ranging from 44, 54 square feet up to 9,300 is our largest. The reduction in density is right at 30%, 29.7 reduction in density of the project. The minimum lot size increased by 97%. I'd, I'd like to say it doubled, but we were just shy of that, 97%. The prior minimum lot size was 22, 32 square feet, and now it's 44, 15. The average lot size is now 5,421 square feet. And that's a 56% increase from the plan that was before this, before you all, in the past months here. We're now at the low, low end of low-medium density, borderline on low density, on the top end of it. And all the lots now have a minimum width of 50 feet, and we've removed all of the alley-loaded product type entirely from the plan that was previously seen here. And as mentioned, we, to, to eliminate the concern of the two-story view into the backyards of the existing neighbors, this is the reason we changed home site one through 15 to be restricted to single-story only. Also, I do have a slide. I'll finish my comments, but we, we also have some elevations. Is it possible to show that? Wanted to speak to the elevations. There's elevation work that wasn't in front of you, to show the, the intent of the quality we intend to deliver on this, and the architecture. I think this slide will just be helpful. That wasn't here, and there was some, I think, misconceptions on the quality of the product we intend to deliver in this neighborhood. So, why they get that up. The street widths were increased to 41 feet as well, and we, Eric has been working extensively with fire and, and public works on, on this. And the traffic count dropped as well, because of the, the drop in density. So, a, a lot here, and I, I hope these modifications speak to our appreciation of the neighbors and our desire to, to understand, come their way. We, of course, couldn't meet on all the points. But I, I will also mention, on the self-storage, we changed the operating hours from, instead of 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., 7:00 to, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., to shorten that. The, it, it's just, it's our objective to, to be good neighbors. I think this will be a beautiful project. I, I assure you, this will be a nice, quiet, attractive addition to our community, and we respectfully ask for your support tonight on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Leah, do we have, or Leah, do we have a, I'm sorry, I'm used to Kayla.
I know.
Do we have any leader of opposition?
We do. We have four requests to speak, and the leader of opposition is Tom Clendenon.
Okay, can we get that leader of opposition first, please?
Good evening, city-
Hold on, sir. For leader of opposition gets 15 minutes? Now, if this doesn't show we're fair.
That's all we asked for. This is not intuitive, I'm so sorry. If you like, I can go ahead and just use my, my phone, if you don't mind. I think it's, I don't think it's me.
Well, I would like to see a clock running.
That's, that's fair, if we can get that going. Is it possible to use the overhead to show a timer?
There it goes, there, there's right there.
Oh, we got that?
There it is. So, hang on, let me do that.
I'll give you a couple of seconds at the end.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners, city staff, and my fellow neighbors. My name's Tom Clendenon, and I live at 1377 Owani Court. I'm right adjacent to the entrance of this facility, to the residential area. I want to thank you for your support last April, when you voted this denial of this project. You took a look at it, and you decided it didn't belong here. I feel sorry that, for you, that the city council didn't support your decisions that were brought to them. I didn't know if you were aware, but the applicant did provide a new plan to the city council that night. I asked several times whether it was a new plan. I was told there was. I was told, no, there wasn't. But anyhow, they did bring a new plan to that city staff, or city council meeting that night. Okay, and I was told it was a misunderstanding between me and the applicant that, about this new plan. We still have a problem with this project. The applicant has only changed the residential area. No consideration, other than the hours of operation, have been done with the mini-storage. And as one commissioner said last time at this meeting, this is a great project, the mini-storage building, but it doesn't belong there. It doesn't belong there. The owner knew full well, when he bought that property, it was his own commercial office, which it currently is, and everybody bought property around the area, knowing that that was gonna be a commercial office. If they didn't want it to be commercial office, maybe they should have put that in a contingency of when they purchased the property. So, why did he buy the project, property? I don't know, but that's, that's his decision. Just today, I saw a sign that's on the Yosemite Avenue, right across the little street from the Panda Express, and it says, "That new office space, single-story, coming." Anywhere from, I think it was 2,500 to 16,000 square feet of offices, your pick. Our neighbors bought our property with this, knowing it was gonna be commercial office. Now, let's get to the elephant in the room, the real elephant. That's the mini-storage. Do you realize that doesn't follow any of our guidelines? It's, doesn't have the landscape buffer that it should be. City staff was saying they thought they had it, but no, it is not there. There's, they've got some zero lot lines. There's gonna be no landscaping. There's nothing gonna be there. We still have that 14, 12-to-14-foot-high block wall. It's gonna be unsightly, graffiti possible. So, that's, the only thing that has changed on that miniStorage at all is the hours of operation. From 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. was the original proposal. It's 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Gee, it's really funny. It's the same office hours that they have at their other miniStorage at Yosemite and R. So, why wasn't that there on the original go-around? So, once this is built, it's only gonna add seven jobs. That's a prime piece of property for seven whole jobs, maybe. Okay, let's get to the information on the houses. They've had months now, since April, to get these plans right, and I don't see that yet. I said, right now, according to Section 18 dot 16 dot 080, they are supposed to show the existing uses and the ownership of the lots. Well, that doesn't show on that plan. Here's a really big missing one. There's an easement coming out of the surgery center for the two roadways that are there. Here is the map of the dedicated easements. These are on record. No mention of it. Okay? That's pretty important. Now, let's get on to things that might look better if it was done. So, the report said that lots 1 through 15 are only gonna be single-story. And we heard that last time, and then during the meeting, it changed. Lots 8, 16 through 28 are gonna be possibly two-story. Well, things keep, seem to be changing the goalpost on this project, and they're, one of the biggest concerns we had was all those nice big redwood trees on the southern end of this property. That didn't even get mentioned tonight. It got pushed aside. Nobody brought it up. Who's gonna maintain those trees? How are they gonna be watered? How are they gonna be, who's gonna take care of them? It's not been addressed. So, they aren't working typically, completely with our neighborhood. When we had our meeting, yes, we saw the third plan that showed up. It took me two weeks to get a copy of that plan in my hand. And we want to talk about deviations. They had deviations on this, the first set of plans you saw. I'm not seeing those deviations now. So, are we gonna get some of those deviations, where we were gonna get four-foot sidewalks instead of five-foot? They did change the roads. There's just a lot of stuff that's still up in the air. And this, this property needs to stay commercial office. When it's gonna be commercial office, it's gonna show that we are supporting new students graduating from the new medical school here at the UC that's coming under construction right now. We're gonna have offices for them to do their work, whether it be physical therapy, dialysis, you know, it just goes on and on and on. I have to hope you all agree that this project is ill-conceived and not thought out to the end of this. I got a suggestion for the owner. Why don't they put this miniStorage on the northeast corner of Yosemite and Gardner, where they're gonna do 400 apartments? That would be a perfect location to have this miniStorage. It doesn't belong on Yosemite Avenue. It belongs off. Now, this applicant, this is, I don't know, this is, I think they're gonna be their fourth miniStorage if it gets approved. Do you realize, right now, in the city of Merced, with what's existing, what's been approved, and what's under construction, we're gonna have 11, at least 11 miniStorages? And that's gonna be more than Starbucks in Merced City. That's, that's kind of funny to me. I hope you'll support the Oakmont neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. Keep this as a commercial office, and reject this proposed miniStorage, along with this residential development. Can I get everybody in the audience that's against this to please stand up? We don't have the numbers we had last time, but the majority of the people here show you that we still care about our neighborhood. Thank you. We respectfully ask you to deny this again. If you deny it, it's gonna go back to the city council, but I think it really needs another denial from this planning commission. Thank you for your time, and I'll reclaim my existing time.
Thank you. And Leah, I, I hit the clock at 7:15. If you could just make it 7:30, just for that extra time that you've lost.
Yes.
All right. And do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Yes. We'll call Robert Denuzzo, Lee Bach, and Carol Denuzzo.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. I appreciate the efforts of the developer in making the changes to the residential neighborhood to, in the subdivision. My problem is still with the miniStorage. And why these two are linked to, and the zone change is, is, does not make sense. Do we have to accept the miniStorage if we accept the residential? The miniStorage facilities are being denied countrywide, because they're a bad land use. While planning staff may endorse this project, they say the project is in the best public interest. Well, there was a planning commission meeting held on April 9th, and then, as well as the city council meeting on July 22nd, where the overwhelming public interest was to deny this project. This will have an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhood. MiniStorage facilities typically have a lot of excess exterior lighting to deter crime. There is virtually no landscaping on this project inside the perimeter. There's a very narrow strip of landscaping on the perimeter, but inside the project is all roofs and hardscape. That's a heat gain area for, in the summer, it just picks up heat and holds it. Storm events, that's all impervious material. There's no, no chance for groundwater recharge. It's all just gonna overflow the storm drains. Storage facilities do not provide any job growth. If this was a commercial office complex, we'd have lots of people working in offices. We'd have tenants coming in and out. There's also no prospect of any spin-off projects for this. A commercial office complex would generate offshoots like coffee shops and nearby places to eat. A miniStorage is just a, basically, a dead piece of land. Most miniStorages in other communities and throughout the country are located in light industrial areas. How this, how miniStorage has got classified to be in a business park zoning does not make sense. Every other community around, miniStorage is classified as light industrial or warehouse occupancy. And the reason it's coming, this is coming before you, is it is, it is a, it's a controversy. We don't need another miniStorage. This is setting a precedent. How many more miniStorages are gonna come before you on nice, main thoroughfares that a developer wants to build on, you know, as a, as a project to enhance his bottom line? Again, we'd like you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping to have the aerial view of that. I don't know if we can bring that back up before I start? No, I think it was like page 11 or something. There we go. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. And hello again. My name is Carol Denuzo. I live on Awani Drive, just one street over from this development. This proposed development site. This is now the second time I've stood before you to speak out against this project. One that already was unanimously, unanimously rejected by this planning commission, and yet here we are again. I want to begin by acknowledging the developer's willingness to make some changes. Reducing the number of homes and increasing their lot sizes. But let's be clear. Those changes do not address the fundamental, the fundamental issue, the heart of this proposal, the mini storage facility. And that is exactly what makes this project unsuitable for this location. This property is not just any piece of land. It is already zoned for commercial office use. Zoning that reflects long-term vision for, for how this area can grow and step with the future of Merced. That vision becomes more important now with the UC's medical education building underway. A facility designed for instruction, research, academic offices, and community programs. It's no longer a vision, it's happening. That kind of investment demands complementary development. Clinics, professional office, research facilities, and services that actually create jobs and support growth. That use does, excuse me, not a mini storage. That use does nothing to enhance this momentum, nothing to strengthen our local community, and nothing to improve the quality of life for people who actually live here. Even with your homes on larger lots, this plan still misses the mark. The concessions are surface-level changes that do not fix the core problem. This is a short-sighted proposal for a site that does so much, deserves so much better. They are trying to squeeze this project into a place where it simply doesn't fit, as you can see. It's like forcing a square peg into a round hole. No matter how much you reshape the edges, it's never going to fit. We walk this community daily. We know the patterns of traffic, the character of the community, and the opportunities this project, this property represents. And I can tell you, a mini storage facility and scattered housing do not belong. They are out of sync with the direction Merced is moving and out of step with the needs of this community. We are not opposed to growth. We are opposed to bad planning disguised as compromise. The truth is, this plan, even when in its revised form, remains the wrong project for the wrong place. So tonight, I urge you once again, protect the vision of the zoning that was meant to be upheld and think beyond short-term concessions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Lee Basie. I'm here with my wife Suzanne Basie. I'm a lifelong resident of Merced of 60 years. I'm speaking to formally register my opposition to the agenda item 25835, which is now before you for the third time. While I respect the role of the planning commission in evaluating development proposals, I strongly urge you to deny this application for the mini storage. The proposed mini storage does not belong in this location and should not be considered as part of this application. This type of development is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. To quote Planning Commissioner Jeremiah at our first hearing, "This should really be two separate applications." I could more agree with what he said. "Allowing the mini storage to move forward under the current proposal undermines both the transparency and community trust in the planning project." This is our third time before you, our second time or third time with the council. How many more times do we have to appear? The last time we were here, you voted 7-0 against this project moving forward. 7-0, to have the city make us come back again. I, I just, I found, I find the process just, it blows my mind. Residents and stakeholders deserve the opportunity to review such a significant and permanent structure like a mini storage. Once it's built on, on its own merits, not bundled with an unrelated housing application. It's almost like a backdoor. They're basically using the houses to get the mini storage in, and now we find out tonight that the city of Merced is, you've got more houses than you need. And we were told the first time, "Oh no, we need more houses. We need more houses." That's news to me. For these reasons, I respectfully request the commission deny agenda item 25835 in its current form and require that any mini storage be filed and reviewed as a separate application. I do want to acknowledge the developer for the outreach. They did listen. Their housing project appears like a good project. We even offered to get a group together to buy the property so we could do houses, but they're not interested in selling. And then this is a fun fact. There will now be more many, there will now be as many mini storages as car washes and dollar stores in the city of Merced. Is that something we really want to be known for in the Central Valley? Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, are there any other public comments?
No, that's it.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Oh, can we actually bring the developer back? Because I forgot to ask the commission if they would like to ask the developer of any questions. Commission, do you have any questions for the developer? I brought him all the way back up here, guys. Okay, well, I guess I have a couple of questions. Give me one second here, let me find my notes again.
Sure. Will I also have opportunity for rebuttal?
Rebuttal time, yes. All right. So just to go back, is, you know, we, you know, as has been said multiple times, we did deny this project earlier this year. Can you speak to the changes that were made once again and kind of address some of the concerns that we had then and versus what the changes were at the city council for me?
Can you say that again? I just want to make sure I understand the question.
Yeah, just, when we denied that project last, you know, last time here at the planning commission, can you address what changes you've made to this project that's significant compared to this, the last time and this time?
Yes. The, I think the most significant changes are around the density and the lot size, which is, was from our learnings from the neighborhood meetings, a very important factor to them. I think there was a concern of the higher density might bring value issues and so forth. So, we went to work on that, and I, it made, in my history of building here, unprecedented adjustments for the neighbors on this. We've, I don't think we've ever changed a project by 30% reduction. And the, again, we eliminated all of the risk of two-story homes looking into their, their backyards, which was very important to them. The, the, but I, and I think that's, and the lot size and the lot widths and the, I'd like to make a correction also. I said the street width was 41. That's not correct. It's the right-of-way that's 41. Does that answer your question, Jeremiah?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Yeah.
At this time, let's go ahead and if you have rebuttal, let's reset the clock. You had 9:33 remaining, I believe. 9:30?
Good. Okay. Yeah, we have a number of disagreements on this, but I, I think to start with, there were a number of technical issues mentioned by the opposition. We disagree particularly around items like easements and things. Your staff has been very thorough. We've, we've gone through these. We have planned for those easements. And they've been very thorough on, on walking through with the lighting, as we mentioned, and staff pointed out tonight, landscape, fencing attractiveness, so forth. And I think to this comment of the project doesn't belong, we just obviously disagree. I think there's a community that's missing here tonight, and that's our customers, the, the people that work with us. We have a facility, as you may know, on the corner of Yosemite and R. It's been there for 20 years. We've got along great with the neighbors. It's attractive still. We maintain it, manage it locally. The, we know, we're full there, and we know where our clients are, and we know the need. And there's great need out here. So we just disagree that this is the wrong place for it. And I think there's many here, like I said, in the community that aren't speaking, that aren't represented, that need this. There, there's a new economy. We all know there's a new economy. And there's, these are not only local jobs that are run this, but the self-storage supports the new economy jobs. These people that are, have economy and, and jobs on the internet, and they're selling materials and this and that, that's all being supported out here. So there's, there's economy being supported out of this, this project and, and will continue to be. That I think is important, and we need to recognize it. And it's, and it's in this location to cut down on vehicle miles traveled. So these people can use the service and get to the, the location quickly and not be driving clear across town and burning fuel and everything else. There was comments about the goalposts moving and the changes in the project. I'd just like to point out that every change we've made has been in an effort to come towards the neighbors. So I, I don't think it's fair to characterize it. We're changing the project on them. I think we're changing the project to try to accommodate them. Is, I think, important to note. The redwood trees were not mentioned because with the, they were, the primary focus at the city council is a block to the two-story homes. Without the two-story homes, there won't be a need to, I don't see a need. I think those trees will, it'll be like any other neighbor in town. They can decide if they want a tree in their backyard or not, if they own a home. The office space, we have vacant office space now at Promenade. It's very difficult to fill. I can't speak for the business plan of the man down the street or the company down the street that was mentioned, but I know we have it, and it's very difficult to fill. It's just a new economy. And that space is, and we're full at our Simply Space facility. Our storage facility is full. And we've, we've done a lot of deep homework on, we would not invest in a project like this if we didn't think there was demand. That's another point. I know there's been more popping up, but it's because the city is behind on providing for this self-storage service. I think, I think that's it. I, I just, again, we're anxious to, to do a nice community and to add to the housing and to do something for the, for, for Merced out in that area. This property, as mentioned by staff, has been sitting there since it was annexed in the 80s. And I think it's time to do something nice on it. So again, I hope that answers your questions and ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I bring it back to the commission for discussion. Wait, sorry. The leader of opposition does get time for rebuttal. Apologize.
Good evening, council. Again, I'd like...
Hold on one second. We've got to get the clock right.
I forgot.
There we go.
Okay. I want to reiterate something that I forgot to bring up earlier, and that is that we had a petition that was brought to this council here the last time, had 179 signatures of opposition to this. So it's just not the few people you see here tonight. Also, there was 15 letters submitted to the council that were in opposition to this project. I don't care what the applicant wants to call it, goalpost or whatever. They have changed the plans on us numerous times, and we were misunderstood because we were told it didn't change. I'm just at ends of what they're going to come up and ask for to be changed next. There are easements. I got that easement map from city staff. So, that's an item that's going to have to be addressed. And that was approved back by the council in 2021, I mean, 2001, in April. And I will leave that map with staff here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to bring it back to the commission for discussion. And close the public comment. Commissioners. Commissioner Ochoa.
All right. It's a project that we've seen a couple of times now. Wasn't really sure the thoughts of the city council to bring this back, because you know, it's something that we denied unanimously, and they decided to send it back to us. I do want to say I do appreciate the developer going out of their way to meet with the surrounding area, trying to come up with the, you know, some sort of middle ground there. For me, it's hard, right? Because we have the housing element, which I, I don't mind. I think this storage unit facility, there is a demand for it there. My thoughts, the mini storage on Yosemite and R, I don't drive by and say, I, I don't notice it when I drive by. I, I really don't, and I just feel like that's more in the residential area than, than this one is. My thoughts are, you know, we need four yes votes on approval or denial here tonight. And regardless of what we do tonight, this is going to go to the city council regardless. So, the members here in the audience, regardless of what we do tonight, they have another meeting to attend.
Commissioner Smith.
The homes where they're at, they don't need to have a storage bin that looks like a little prison in the neighborhood with a big wall around it, you know? So, I think that we really need to put a plaza there, a bowling alley, or something that's going to make use for the neighborhood, for the people to have somewhere to go. But a storage bin ain't the place to go. It's going to attract different type of people and a lot of noise, and I don't think that's a good idea. It's a good idea, but not that that neighborhood is not the place to put it. Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? I think I have some thoughts here on this. And I appreciate the developer and, and the public coming out and voicing their concerns. And I think it's a good project for the city. I am having a bit of a pause, and before I go into what that pause is, the reason why I believe that the city council brought this back to us was because there was some more vetting that needed to be done, some more fact-finding, things of that nature. And I, I think the city council was inadvertently, was giving us a, a lesson and, and how to be a better planning commission. And, and I, and I do appreciate that from the city council. So by bringing this back to us, it has prolonged this process longer than I think most of us in the room will agree was necessary, but here we are. And I think it, it speaks to the commission and all commissioners of, of taking the time and asking the questions and, and having to really vet out all projects, not just this project, and getting involved and, and asking those hard questions so we can make the hard decisions. My pause is I, I'm still kind of where I was at, at the last time we were here. In regards to it being a singular project with housing and the mini storage, and that still gives me pause. still gives me pause, because I believe both are needed. I, I see the need for planning, for, for mini storage, and I see definitely need the, the need for housing. And it being tied together makes this a really difficult decision to balance the needs of everybody involved. And I'm having troubles, and I'm gonna look to city staff here to really help convince me that this project is in line with our 2030 plan. And how it really connects our, our vision, how it connects to our community, and make, I guess, I guess I have to leave it to the city staff to try to convince me that this is a good project moving forward for the city. And I don't know if I've really received that specifically in the regards to the, the mini storage section. I, I just, I'm not quite there yet. So, does it meet the, the 2030 policies that we have and, and the vision for what we see as a gateway to the city of Merced? And I understand what Commissioner Ochoa says, that when we drive by the storage facility on the corner of R and Yosemite Avenue, we don't really see it. But we weren't there to make that decision when that was actually put into play, you know? We're, we're now looking at today and how that affects the future of Merced. So I, I kinda guess I bounce it back to staff and, and really, let's dive into, does this meet the 2030 plan and the vision that the city of Merced, even though it was 20 years ago, or, you know, roughly 20 years ago? Is it aligned? Does it align with this?
Thank you. Yes, I believe it does. So we, now, it's, again, it's a plan development. So you have the purview to require different standards, but when it comes to our general plan, the general plan does call this out as commercial office. This, you have the purview to be able to change the land use designation if, if that is what you so choose. Does it meet our standards? Does it meet our requirements per general plan? Yes, it does. And it supports the economic development portion and, and the policies of, of the city. It isn't really our role to advocate for a project. It is our role to process and to look at the projects based on our codes and, and requirements. And in this case, it's a, it is a plan development, which allows them a lot of leeway to create the code themselves, the zoning themselves. So with the zone change and the general plan change, that does give you allowances to add conditions if you're not, you're not happy or not convinced that the, you know, the landscaping in the front or the setbacks or that kind of thing for the self-storage. You can, you can require changes if you would like. That is your purview. The other option would be to, you know, to send it back to staff to work with the applicant to make changes that they could then bring back. If the, if the issues for you are the landscaping or the, you know, setbacks or the look of the, the front, you know, we, we can, we can work with them on that to mitigate some of those concerns from you and the, and the neighbors. But as mentioned, this would not be a proposal if it did not financially make sense. The office space has been there for many years. And, you know, I do know that people do utilize the storage, the small businesses, public agencies use small storage for evidence, you know? I know of law enforcement agencies that utilize those things. So it's not just for some person who, you know, was storing things in their garage now to have a place. It, it does satisfy the needs of a community holistically, and it would not be placed here if there wasn't an economic need to do so, or, and that the data didn't show that. But as far as the city requirements, it meets all of our requirements and standards and policies related to the general plan and else, and otherwise.
Thank you. Commission, commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioners, oh, Commissioner Smith, I show you on the queue. Are you on the, still on the queue? Do you want to speak? Okay. Commissioner Swigert.
Yes, just to kind of... I, I think the housing part of it, I mean, that's what I do for a living, so these are gonna, these are gonna sell like hotcakes. Everybody wants a, you know, a gated community. I think it's amazing. I just, I'm a little on the fence with, again, the, the storage unit. I, I just found out where, how many storage units are we gonna have in Merced? They said 11. Yeah, that, that was surprising. So I'm, I also sat through that very, very long city council meeting, and what was, what was proposed to us was not what was proposed to the city council. So they were almost two different, you know, projects. So when I sat through that, I was, I was a little taken back. So at this point, the two projects together, I, I'm kinda with you, Jeremiah, where it's, I wish they were two different projects. So, just a comment.
Mr., Commissioner Ochoa.
So here, as a planning commission, what we have control over is the environmental review, the vesting tentative subdivision map, the site plan review, and the minor use permit. The recommendations to city council will be for the commercial office to business park and to high-medium density residential, and then the site utilization plan to develop number 20, to change for approved development standards. With that being said, the use of the land is, I can be, someone correct me if I'm wrong, is gonna go to the city council, regardless if you approve or deny. We are here to approve the plans of the project, to say, hey, is this a good plan? Does it make sense? Is there, and that's kinda where I'm at, is, does the project here meet all our city requirements? And I think that's the scope of what we are here to do as the planning commission, not to change the zoning. That's the job of the city council. Yeah, if I'm wrong, yeah. I just want to clarify for the city council, or not the city council, the planning commission members here, because we do have people that are new. This is a big project.
Right. I mean, the, the commission's looking at this project as it's presented to you by the applicant and as evaluated by staff. So the commission, within its immediate discretion, has the ability to approve, disapprove, modify the neg, negative declaration, which is a sequel consideration, the vesting tentative subdivision map, the site plan review permit, and minor use permit. So those are final actions that are before the commission for its consideration, and those, again, pertain to the project. So I think to answer your question, yes, for the VTE, the vesting tentative subdivision map, site plan review permit, minor use permit, as well as the environmental review document, the commission is considering whether or not the project as proposed meets the criteria set forth in the city's municipal code. In regards to the elements that go back, that are, that back, that are then put forward in front of the city council for their consideration, deliberation, and potential approval or disapproval, are the general plan amendment and the site utilization plan. So two distinct actions, which is why staff has said you need to take two separate actions. I will say for the general plan amendment, the municipal code does require four votes either way. Failure to obtain four votes, either approving or denying, is deemed an automatic denial pursuant to the city's municipal code and then is automatically forwarded to the council for its consideration.
So theoretically, we could approve environmental review, vesting tentative subdivision map, site plan review, minor use permit, and then recommended disapproval for general plan amendment, site utilization plan, and the city council will have a final say on those two items.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Kinda where I'm at is, we can go back and forth all night about this. We can say, put more trees out front. The way the project is in front of us with both elements, emotion needs to get made. If we modify this, say, hey, put more trees, more foliage out front, make this a little nicer, is that gonna change your opinion on this project? No, I, I, I don't think so. The housing element, I do not have an issue with whatsoever. The storage units, I, I kinda go back and forth. I do see the demand for it. Like I said, when I drive past Yosemite and R, I, I really don't see it there. Is it the best use of the, the zoning there? That's not my decision to make. That's for the city council to recommend. I could have my opinions and say what I think about that, but at the end of the day, that's gonna be for the city council to decide, not us.
I'm reflecting on, on what you just said, so give me a moment here to, I mean... And I don't disagree with you. And the last thing I want to do is punt this to the city council just for the sake of punting, right? We're, we're here to, to make sure that we, we vet this out as best we can and make the, the best decision as we can for, you know, overall, we're looking for, you know, does this fit public welfare compatibility? Is it consistent with our general plan, you know? And have we shown that there's clear, specific alignment with that general plan? Have we received enough data to prove there's a public benefit and an economic value? Are there miserable enforce, you know, enforceable mitigation measures like light, you know, lighting, stormwater, heat island impacts, things of that nature? I mean, that's what we're here for. So we have to make sure that those questions are answered before we cast our votes. And if we're at that stage where, you know, somebody or a member of the commission feels that we can put a motion together, I, I say we make a motion. Now, will that motion pass or fail? I'm not sure we're there yet. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
Truly, I think if we make a motion here, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to say what I think of the vote will be. Am I allowed to say that?
I'm not sure what your question is.
If I say, hey, if we make a motion to approve, can I say, is this project gonna get passed, or do I think it's gonna get denied?
Like a pre-vote?
No, I think you would put forward your motion and see what the commission's pleasure is. I would suggest taking this in two pieces, though, right? You have the final action before the commission, and then the second piece would be the recommendation to the city council. But that's just my recommendation or suggestion.
Would anyone like to take a stab at a motion? I, I'm thinking through the motion here real quick. And if anybody wants to jump in prior to my brain, feel free. So this is what we're looking at, right? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go for the motion. I make a motion to approve the environmental review 24-25 with the vesting tentative subdivision map, 1332, site plan review permit 551, and the minor use permit 2413. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
There is a motion to approve. There's a second. Commissioners, cast your vote. Commissioner Smith? Just to clarify, we're voting to approve the environmental review 2425, the vesting tentative map subdivision 251332, the site plan review permit 551, and the minor use permit 2413. And once again, I want to state for the record that Anthony Gonzalez is actually Jeremiah Gregan's vote as the chair. So the motion carries three to two. Now we need a motion for the general plan amendment, correct?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to disapprove general plan amendment number 24-02, and the disapproval of site utilization plan revision at number three to plan development number 20.
So the, the motion is to deny?
Yes.
The general plan amendment?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I will second.
There is a motion to deny the general plan amendment by Commissioner Ochoa with a second by Commissioner Swigert. Commissioners, please cast, cast your votes.
So pursuant to the municipal code, because the motion failed to obtain the four required votes, it's deemed denied based on the municipal code provisions, and it's automatically forwarded to the city council for consideration.
For approval or denial?
For their consideration.
Got it. All right.
And that's specific to the general plan amendment 24-02.
Give me a second, I'm trying to figure out where we're at in the meeting now.
You read the action items? F1?
Yes, next, was it item E3? Four?
F1?
F1, yes, thank you.
Yes. Cancellation of October 8th Planning Commission meeting due to lack of items. I think this requires a vote.
I'll make a motion to cancel the October 8th meeting.
I'll second.
There is a motion by Commissioner Ochoa to cancel the October 8th meeting, and a second it by Commissioner Swigert. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Layla, next item?
Yes, next item, G1, report by acting planning manager of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you very much. So you just voted to cancel October 8th. We do have a citizens advisory focus group. Of course, you're, you're represented on that group by Anthony, and actually Jeremiah is there too, though he's holding a different position. And that is happening actually on October 8th, where we will discuss the existing conditions and trends report from our consultant...
and trends report from our consulting firm, as well as from us, with staff's support. And that basically will be where we're looking at the baseline of things where they are, whether it be mobility, or safety, or land use. Here's our, here's our baseline. And so we've, they have conducted research, and we have worked with them to make sure everything is current and correct. And so that'll, that'll happen on the 8th at 6:00 PM here in this room. And then October 22nd, we don't currently have any items on that agenda, but that could change. November 5th, we do have a tentative map for a large lot subdivision potentially for the VST. So the VST project, which many of you heard, I believe, like last year, it's actually been something that has been coming through planning for, you know, a decade or so. But some of that, some of that consideration was actually under the county. It is now, it's been, it was annexed to the city last year, and it is now coming through with their tentative maps to start looking at the development side and implementation, implementing that specific plan. So those tentative maps will start coming to you. There is a large lot subdivision map that could make its way here on the 5th, or we may actually combine it on the 19th of November with other tentative maps. But it would have to be considered first, because that large lot map needs to sort of be the foundation for the rest of the tentative maps. And that is all that's happening. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to, for us to place on the next agenda. I'm willing to add those to our list so that we can make sure that we cover anything that's of interest to you.
Commissioners, is your chance to potentially add any agenda items? You got anything? If not, definitely send an email to Johnny.
And I will receive it and consider it and put it into some agenda that we have in the future.
And with that, I believe we come to adjournment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we may introduce our newest member to our city attorney team, Ms. Ron, I was gonna call you Rhonda Lewis, I know. Lucas, Rhonda Lucas. And she will be joining you very shortly as part of the team that sits up at the dais.
Nice. Welcome aboard, thank you. Does this mean we're losing you, Trevor? Kinda, sorta? Okay. You'll still be here? You'll be looking in on us like the voice of God? All right, perfect. All right, with that, that does bring us to adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second by Commissioner Swigert. All those, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Adjourned.